Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody who chooses to to view this. And this is our Kane County. Commissioner race, they're the only contested races in in this in this county. There are two commission seats that are being. That they are running for, and there are two candidates, two Republican candidates for each seat. We have, we have Celeste Myers and Michael East are running. For a commission seat, does that see they are be Celeste?
Be.
Seat B, and then we have Andy Gant and and Patty. Kaboja.
Baya.
Kabea, Patty Kabea, now, Michael East and Patty are not. Not in this, we'll try and patch them in, but if they choose to be a part of it, for some reason, they will. They they had reasons why they had other obligations tonight, so. The format here on this is going to be, it's not a debate format. This is simply a get to know the candidate and where they are on their positions, and so. What I'm going to do is I'm just going to ask questions. That I think are pertinent to the county. We'll give each candidate two minutes on each question. And because there are only two people that are that are going to be responding tonight, it should be. It shouldn't take too long to do this. So let me start with you, Andy. Andy, this is the question, and Celeste, you'll be fielding this question as soon as Andy is finished. The county is just one of many forms of. And levels of government, including the federal, the state, the cities and the county. What do you feel is the proper role that county government fills? And specifically, what should Kane County Commissioners do?
Um, county government has both role, important roles, both locally. Statewide and federally. A lot of people may not. May not realize how much reach and how much impact we can have. For important issues for us if we reach out. At the state federal levels, we definitely have some significant roles locally as well. We've got, you know, of course, the things I I focused on, and we spend a lot of time on our land. Use issues both in planning, in zoning, in access. You know, Kane County's been in the forefront of many national issues, including roads, monuments. Environmental actions, you know, against us, and. We really have to work as a team with our state and federal delegation. I was quite surprised. After becoming a commissioner, just how much time we would spend interacting with. People at both the state and federal level. As we fight these fights to keep our land open access. For, you know, the people that live here and and. And trying to keep Utah safe as a state, you feel, I feel like we play a lot of defense. There's a lot of aggressive action against us to take away our rights. And I've really spent a lot of time fighting that fight as Commissioner Doug Heaton has and. And Commissioner Wade Heaton as well, you know, we really have. Spent a lot, we spent a lot of time on those public land issues. Time, how how am I doing, Doug? I guess I should, I'll start a timer on my lips and stuff, I don't, I don't rattle on.
Yeah, you got about 20 seconds left.
Yeah, so obviously, a lot of local issues with taxes, TRT. You know, things that have really developed and changed dramatically in the last couple of years. Land, you know, again, land use and who and and. Development is huge now, as everybody will know, housing too. So those are some pretty big issues for us right now, a few of the many.
Very good, thank you, Andy. Celeste, same question, you want me to repeat the question?
I don't think so, I think I've got it, and I would agree quite a bit with Commissioner Gant's assessment, and. I'll just add a couple of things that are also important. For example, our our county in and of itself is. Low population because so much of our county is federally or state owned. We only have between eight and nine thousand people living here. And we are very far from the capital of our state. And because of those reasons, and we're relatively poor compared to some of those. Up north counties. Because of that, it's very important that we have a. Strong presence in the legislature, but it's also important that we work with our neighboring counties. And kind of form coalitions, there's the Association of Governments. And other, almost a Southern Utah caucus that can. Add to our ability to leverage and to be heard.
Okay, thank you. So Celeste, I'll start with you this time, what are the top challenges that Kane County faces, and how do you plan to address them?
Yeah, so I just touched on them in my last response, so one of the problems is we've got over four thousand square miles and. Is that right? I'm trying, am I saying acres or miles? But we've got a huge county, it's one of the largest in the state, and only six percent of it is. Able to be owned by people who live here. And that's it, that's a big challenge. We've got enough water. And yet we've got to fight for our water, to keep our water here and. And to not have it robbed from us by neighbors, neighboring states and neighboring areas. We've got to. Take a hold of our land rights that we do have left to us. We've got to handle some infrastructure concerns as far as energy, roads. Electricity, access, all of that, so we've got some challenges and and also some opportunities.
Thank you. Andy, do you want me to restate the question?
Yeah, say that one again, I know it was close to our first one.
What are the top challenges that Kane County faces, and how do you plan to address them?
Okay, top challenges, I would have to. Agree with Celeste again, as time allows. Tourism, land use related to visitors and. The effects on the local economy, local agriculture. You know, prioritizing those uses are huge, have always been huge, even more so now. And right behind that, I'm going to keep kind of going to the same place. Things like Biden's thirty by thirty, where he wants to lock up thirty percent of our land by. By twenty thirty, and issues that stem from that, there are are an endless list of. Latigious folks out there that are doing, are attacking us from every possible angle. To tie up land uses, grazing is is unbelievably big, and it's not gonna live if we don't. Do our best defense, you know, to protect those types of uses, they're gonna go away. So those types of issues, you know, access with roads, which again, they know if they can lock up roads, they can keep. You know, but at uses like ag, historical uses that we enjoyed in the area. They'll be gone, ATV use, cross country, you know, any kind of four wheel drive stuff. That that'd completely disappear if we don't make ourselves heard.
Thank you.
No humans allowed.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm gonna ask a question that's not on my list, but it's very important to me personally. In two thousand twelve. The American Lands Council was formed and and Utah passed House Bill one forty-eight, which basically said. We demand that the federal government relinquish to the state of Utah, the 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 lands, the federal lands that were. Guaranteed to us in our state enabling act and are and are assured to us in Article Four, Section Three. Of the the property clause of the United States Constitution, that. That. That passed the Utah State Legislature, and that's been the cause that I've worked on now for the last. It were going on eleven years now. Do you support that? That basically means that that Utah would ask the federal government to relinquish those lands, it could be a. A transfer of of the public lands from federal ownership and jurisdiction to state ownership and jurisdiction. And this is a, this, this can be a bit of a toxic question, so. I just guess I would like to know how you feel about that, that that effort. I'm gonna start with you, Andy.
Yeah, I, it is, it is, it's gotten a lot of attention in years gone by, and. I I believe in government closest to the people, and I think. Celeste will probably agree that the best form of government is people representative as. And control needs to be as local as possible. So anything along that line that is reasonable and could be accomplished, I agree. We're a sovereign state, we need to fight for that. We had, we've had some good things happen in the last year. We've got some antiquities act legisla- or. Litigation that's. That's been talked about a little, but is really take, get some good steam behind the scenes, we, the state. Has got our back again on these issues, you know, it kind of died for a while. We had public lands meeting, I was just talking to Celeste about the other day. Back down still out of town, been at meetings in Richfield with Flipco and Reg. And he's announced a new focus on. Transferring, you know, control, responsibility, you know, in a. We gotta fight that fight in a way that, you know, we don't get. Called out as radicals and and, you know, we've got to use good judgment so we can actually get something done. But he said that he has a new focus from the legislature this year. To make it clear, you know, that we are a sovereign state and that they, the state of Utah. Will help places like Kane County make a statement in these battles that we fight, I support it one hundred percent.
Thank you, so last same question.
Yes, absolutely, and to piggyback on that, I think it's very important that we have a good read on. Who we're dealing with at any particular moment, or the intricacies of each. Entity that we're dealing with, because sometimes a velvet hand is the way to go, sometimes a big. Bold statement or pronouncement is the way to go, and we have to know when to use which tool in our toolbox. In order to effectively move the needle, we we can't. Just always use one technique, because different legislators, different committees, different entities. Are going to respond differently, and so that's why. Whoever's on the commission needs to be extremely strategic, work together seamlessly and really. Set aside ego, set aside, you know, I'd I'd like to get the credit on this one and just. Think about how do we get our state rights back? I'm a platform Republican, which means that the portion of the platform that talks about, the Utah platform. That talks about states' rights and federal land overreach and and et cetera, it resonates very deeply with me, I'd love to see us. Return to at least the use of our lands. Ownership is preferable, but even the use.
Thank you.
Can I, can I do a quick follow up?
Sure, you you had a little time left.
Um, yeah, I really have appreciated, you know, we've worked with Margaret Byfield in the past. Their their organization, her husband are, is just phenomenal. We actually have a significant budget set aside. When we feel the time's right to reengage in their efforts. And I hoping that's not in the too far distance, you know, that those. The time's gonna be right to get involved again, she's done some great work for the county. And we support though, I support those efforts one hundred percent, yes, absolutely.
Margaret is a force, she's a daughter of Wayne Hage, and they made a terrible enemy when they, when they got. When they stirred her up, that was a.
Yeah.
Strategic mistake.
Her her values are phenomenal.
They are.
Couldn't align more with her thoughts, yeah.
Okay, third question, and let's see who's turn is to start. Well, this is the fourth question, so.
It comes to me.
Well, okay, comes to you first. Do you, do you know about RS two four seven seven litigation efforts, and where are we at?
Yeah, well, we just have had some wonderful news with that. So for people who are just logging in, RS two four seven seven has to do with. Our ability to have roads and access to our roads and a ownership of our roads within the federal land, so. In effect, almost all the federal land is a wilderness area as far as humans, like before. Humans not welcome, humans not allowed. Because we can't walk through those millions of acres generally, so we need to access it with vehicles and. I don't want to take Commissioner Gant's thunder on this one, because he really has done so much work. But I'll just set it up and then he can come in and and say that. A decades long fight was recently. We got a major win, and it was thanks to the advocacy of our county commissioners and and other entities that. SUA, which is an agency that uses. Never ending invalid legal claims and suits in order to lock up our land indefinitely with no hope of closure. No hope of resolution. They just received a major setback, so with that, I'll go ahead and let you take over from there.
Yeah, that has been kind of my, that's been my key focus as commissioner, it was kind of. My platform when I ran four years ago was, you know, talking to Dirk and. Following up with Doug and following up with with Commissioner Havishaw, you know, that they had really laid some visionary groundwork. I wish people had more information. Topic, they don't understand how Kane County has led the way in an effort that affects the entire nation. In land use rights and and access. And you can ask just about anybody in the nation, I think, if you talk, say, RRUS two four seven seven, Kane County will come to mind. And you kind of build on the shoulders of those that go before, you know, and I just didn't want to see that stop. And it's, you know, it's been a lot of work originally when Commissioner Havishaw started, the county was funding that. And, you know, I don't have to tell you, I want to you, but for those that are listening. You know, it was a real challenge to keep that effort moving, and and the state didn't see the wisdom or the problem initially. And it wasn't long, and they thought, oh, my gosh, you know, we're. As that suit came together, it ended up, you know, having twelve thousand five hundred roads in the state of Utah as part of that litigation. Effects every county in the state, and then they kind of saw the vision and thought, oh, my gosh, so. They have slowly come on as partners, we've worked on that continuously, monthly, you know, there is a back and forth with the Attorney General and. Tony Rampton and Flipco and the Constitutional Defense Council. Lieutenant Governor has had our back, you know, at every turn. We just negotiated a new contract that took a ton of work. To get that through the legislature last year. So the work guaranteed a portion of those expenses. So we're left just carrying a. A small portion of the overall cost, we're still doing the work, you know, and it's our attorneys that are fighting that fight. And it's one that. We have had a great win with with Judge Watt's recent decision, so we've got some momentum, Sue is out.
So Judge Judge Watt has handed down a decision, what was that decision? Either one.
Yeah, you wanna go against Celeste, did my time, huh?
I'll just give a very brief. Five thousand foot view that. His decision was that SUA was not able to just have a. You know, make a claim or or file a suit that had no choice, you know, no chance of resolution, it was simply a technique. To lock up our land and say, no, you know, until.
Let me ask, let me ask an obvious question, did he say they don't have standing?
Yes.
That's what he said?
That is absolutely what he.
Okay, and that that took how many years? Let's see, they were in there in two thousand and twelve. I don't understand why it took ten years to figure out that they didn't have standing.
Right, and and that's another kind of precedent setting case that applies to much more than just RS six four seven seven. What what kind of dummy does it take to think that the third party can just intervene in somebody else's action? This action is between the United States and the county. And the the United States in several cases has attempted to. Resolve this, you know, and and just recently, they actually reached out for a settlement on this, which is another. Major milestone, they 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 contacted Sean Welch and said, we would like to work settlement, everybody's like.
So one more question, and this is just for my edification, if not for everybody else's, so was that the only thing that he ruled, was just that that SUA had no standing, or or did he? Did he actually resolve the case?
Uh, well, there are some final, there are some final arguments to be filed, but essentially. Unless something changes on appeal, that would resolve the case, so. He they could go, they could ask for an unbunk review and send it to the insider. Tent circuit, we don't know, but the way he wrote that. Fight that that document forty-three pages long, I mean, he took us back to day one. On this, what would have been a pretty, could have been a pretty simple ruling, he chose to to rewrite the entire. You know, day one to today in this ruling, so.
Thank you.
Up to appeal.
I let you, I let you all go down a rabbit hole there, I didn't intend to do that, but my my personal curiosity, because that was. That was a huge part of my whole, my whole investment was it was in that particular, that particular fight, that particular issue.
Since we're all going off track, is it okay if I talk for a quick minute about our federal delegation?
Sure.
Because, you know, our representative Chris Stewart is also being primaried this month. And our Senator Mike Lee is also being primaried this month, and Representative Stewart in particular has been. Just a bulldog on public lands issues for us, and there are very few, very few in Washington DC. Who will even talk about these issues, let alone fight strategically and tirelessly. And Chris Stewart is one, and and frankly, Senator Lee's been very strong on that issue as well.
Thank you, okay, I'm gonna try and get us back on course here. Currently, Kane County Commission divides the responsibilities among the three commissioners, and for example. All county departments, including human resources, IT, roads, GIS, public lands. Law enforcement, planning commission, building department, office of tourism, senior citizens, care and share. These are all divided up, I think, when when I sat on the commission, there were like seventy-five different categories, and the commissioners tried to allocate those. So that each commissioner ended up with about twenty-five or something like that. This this question, I'll start with you, Andy, which 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 ones of those? Do you think that you could make the biggest contribution? Who, what are your favorite issues, and you? This is gonna, this could take all night, so just just be brief.
Yeah. I have, you know, a lot of them were just liaison, you know, to a department or something, so you really don't have. A huge part of your day, your week, you know, tied up in those, but the parts, I I've already kind of said it, I'll say it again, you know, the stuff I've really enjoyed. That I thought was most important. Legislative, I do a lot of this, you know, during during the session, I go to Salt Lake each week for a couple days, usually. Two or three days, I love to interact, you know, I think we can get a lot done in those legislative areas. I'm not assigned over it, but obviously, our land use, you know. Different land use stuff, Antiquities Act abuses. So BLM, you know, I spend a lot of time working with. The BLM Forest Service to a smaller degree, because, you know, not much of our county. Is Forest Service, but we do have some projects in Forest Service going on now for Robinson Canyon Trails and Roads. So I'm focused a large part of my time on those assignments.
Last same question, you want me to rephrase?
No, I'm good, so I I'm ready to bloom where I'm planted, I don't have a strong. Feeling like I'd be terrible or or wonderful in any particular one, I'm willing to work. You know, I can head up something, but I'll still work with the rest of the commission as a team. So currently, I'm on City Council for Canab, which is the county seat, and and I just get assigned whatever. Liaison assignments and and project assignments that I get, and and I'm fine with it, so I I have particular interest in certain areas. I think it will take all three commissioners to really push back against. What we're seeing coming from the state legislature, so I think we should all be involved with with legislature. With, you know, one person at the helm, and then everyone else assisting. Land use is a huge issue that's gonna take some teamwork. I I'm interested very much in AOG, Association of Governments, and I get along very well with. Our neighboring county leaders and and I I would love to work and help in that area. I I really have a strong interest in the roads, and that's just kind of a nuts and bolts thing, but I think it's very interesting. So. I'm ready to serve, however.
Good, thank you. This is a a fairly interesting. Contentious in some cases. Issue, Kane County is growing at an unprecedented rate. How do you feel about that, and what is the direction, what legitimate tools do we have, and? And what what is what is fair? With regard to the growth rate of the county, where would you like to see it go, or would you like to see it end? I'm gonna start with you, Celeste.
Yeah, um, actually, I just did an interview this week with Ed Wallace of Utah. Standard News, and he was asking the same question, and he was saying that there's projections. That we could grow up to forty percent in the, actually, I think it was thirty-eight percent. In the next ten years, which is a three point eight percent growth per year on average. And and I explained to him, I said. There's gonna be some years, and there have been some years, where there's a negative residential growth in the county. And then there's other years where we'll be a little bit above the average, like, I think it was three point eight percent. In the last year, so our engineers, they they estimate that we're gonna grow between one and three percent each year. On average, which means that some years are gonna be less than that, some years are gonna be more than that. I I'm a big believer in not playing God too much, I don't like to mastermind and micromanage too much, I think. I believe in natural laws, so in my opinion, natural laws are those that are laid out in the Constitution of the United States and Utah. Natural laws are, for example, in in my opinion, the the Ten Commandments in the Bible, things like that where. If you stick to these basic tenants, these basic principles, then the side details will will fall to their own, so. We're already limited in our county, as we've mentioned many times before, to having six percent of the land that could even ever be built. Which means we have ninety-four percent open space automatically unless things drastically change. So do we want to also make it so that that remaining six percent can't be built on? That's a little bit hedging into the role of the federal government to try to, you know, again, no humans allowed. So if I getting the time buzzer. I'll stop, I'll stop, I've got more to say, but fine.
Yeah, don't 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 get me started, right? Andy, same question.
Yeah, um, growth is a toughie. It it's obviously coming, there are very limited, not very limited, but there are limited ways that we actually can. Put our thumb on it. You know, private property rights are a big deal, if you're a landowner, you know. We gotta be real careful limiting, you know, your 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 rights, your your choices. Residential growth. I I'm I'm a capitalist, I hope that my capitalist roots will make market corrections where necessary and. And when prices are high, demand is high, I hope inventory increases. And from a residential growth perspective, we, I think we need to leave it alone. If people will do a reasonable job, providing infrastructure, resources, you know, to for residential growth. That's the only way we're ever gonna be able to afford to have kids live in our area, right? Too many people have found us, we've got to have affordable residential residential growth. I don't believe that's government's role to provide that, that's a slippery slope that. We gotta stay away from, you know, subsidized rate and rent control is. The first way to destroy, you know, our local economy. Commercial growth, now we have, we have a way to put our. Figureprints on that a little bit. Um, commercial growth, now we have, we have a way to put our fingerprints on that a little bit, and that's a tough decision. Areas that you'd allow rezoning, I mean, I'm talking to V and Z chair, so I have to tell you, but rezones to commercial are a tight rope that we need to walk very carefully. We need commercial growth. I mean, you can't say none. We need to be able to go to the store and you know, if you live out somewhere, you know, get a gallon of milk or a coke or whatever. Uh, but we definitely wanna pick those areas more carefully, you know, and we're coming up on two. So yeah, commercial along highways and major intersections, state highways, you know, we're gonna have to let some of that happen.
I, yeah, yeah, I, I sit on land use planning and zoning. So let, let me just, and this is a, this is another, another question that uh, I'm just gonna ask you, do, do, do you agree or do you not agree? It was Clarence Thomas, a quote from chief, not chief justice, but Justice Clarence Thomas that I read the other day. I can't quote it in, in exactly, but basically what he said is that the rights guaranteed in the constitution are, are private rights. Uh, and I, I, I can quote that part. Uh, it's in the Declaration of Independence. So we believe that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights. He's talking about individual there. He says that there is no such thing as public rights. And I guess my question is, do you agree with that statement? Or do you think that statement is, is uh? So. Uh, I need to keep a, a track here.
Back to me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, uh, no, I, I agree. Those rights, those God-given rights to individual liberty, you know, they trump all, but there is, there is a point where somebody else can prevent you from exercising those rights, right? So that there is a line eventually that we need to take the group into account. Um, I don't know if that's a very clear answer, but utmost is private, yeah, private rights, private property rights, you know, those, those are the things that we need to look at first.
Thank you, Celeste.
Yeah, so if, uh, if someone's violently transgressing against another person or injuring them either financially or physically or some other way that's provable, then that's where that line is. And until it's at that line, then it we truly, whether we wanna hear it or not, what we are protected, what is protected is individual rights. That's it. And, and uh, that's uncomfortable sometimes, and, and I think that discussion came up quite a lot during the pandemic response in the past few years where there, there was a idea of collectivism versus individualism came to a head. And is an individual allowed sovereignty over their own body and over their own, how they live in their family and, and things like that? Um, we can't shy away from that, even if it's uncomfortable, makes us look uncaring, makes us look irresponsible. It is what it is. It's a natural law. It can't be changed.
Thank you. So I guess, because, because I, I'd like this, not just to be, I, I'd like this also to be a teaching moment. I'd like everyone who watches this video to just consider this question. And the question would be, is there any way to exercise a public right that does not completely negate the associated private right? And, and that, that, I mean, it, it appears to me that any public right that becomes a public right negates the individual right with regard to that particular item. Uh, and, and I'm gonna go on. I, I, it's just a question, just a thought question that I, I wish everybody would consider. Okay, let's see. Regulation uh, in building and land use has increased exponentially over the past four decades. Uh, has this been a positive development? And what do you see as an ideal level of regulation? And I think it is Celeste to go first.
Yeah, that's the delicate balance. I think it's swung a little bit too far toward overregulation. I am somewhat encouraged by some of the actions that I've seen the governor's office and the legislature taking to peel back some of the prohibitive regulations on um, trade licenses and, and things like that. And there's been some work also for, with our federal delegation in Washington DC Congress to um, make it, for example, so that military spouses can travel from state to state without having to worry about whether or not their license is gonna transfer. Like, let's say one spouse is in the military and the other one does hair. Uh, they can do hair wherever their spouse gets stationed. Um, that's just one example, but the more regulations, requirements, uh, unnecessary steps, not saying that all steps are unnecessary, but the more unnecessary steps that are allowed to stand due to a desire to make people feel comfortable or for uniformity or for any other reason. Um, that increases costs and we all see it, and we're already in a place of over ten percent inflation in Utah, where we're leading the nation in inflation. Um, wow, that rhymes. Um, anyway, uh, that's a form of inflation, right? Um, regulation is a form of inflation, because when, whenever you say you've gotta have a paved road, not a dirt road, you've gotta have sidewalk, not just uh, not just the pavement. You've gotta have um, a certain substance on the outside of your home that looks nicer. Uh, you've gotta have more licenses and insurance. You've gotta have this, that, the, the cost increases and it's ballooned to the point where the, one of the only ways that we can address it is lessening regulations and overreach.
Perfect, two minutes exactly. Andy, same question.
Now, say it again, Doug, so.
Reg- regulation in building and land use has increased exponentially over the past four decades. Has that, that been a positive development? And what do you see as ideal levels?
Yeah, specifically in building and land use, yeah, um, our affordable housing crisis. Uh, as is typically the case, about half of that is driven by government regulation and red tape. You know, there is a reasonable expectation of, of safety, I suppose, that, you know, maybe you build a building and somebody else is skilled or whatever because of, you know, poor design or construction. Yeah, there are some issues, but, but to the level of regulation, especially now with some of the environmental stuff that's going on, uh, they priced families out of new homes, you know, I don't know, I'd love to know some real numbers, but I would doubt that twenty-plus percent of the cost of a new home or more is generated by government red tape. And there, there are reasonable actions, you know, that could save you money in the long run, but hey, if that prevents somebody from from being able to build or buy property because of red tape, you know, just because people are so, uh, it's litigious, right? They're, they, if we don't require this, the city's gotta say you ha- can't have a crack in the sidewalk, we're gonna get sued. So they spend, you know, ludicrous amounts of money in defense of these ridiculous ambulance chasers, and it's killed our ability to live affordably.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I used to say there are litigation as, 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 has destroyed more liberty than perhaps any other issue. Andy, this will be, you, you'll go first on this one. Um, King County overall tax rate index ranks number eight of the twenty-nine counties in Utah and are considerably above surrounding counties. Is this necessary? And if not, what measures would you see that might lower tax rates?
Um, you know, that's a good question. We, we had a, one of our first uh, updates that have reflected some of the changes this year. And home value, land value going up is, is unbelievable right now. Um, and it's, it's a double-edged sword, because the overall tax rate with truth and taxation actually goes down, right? We haven't had any increases in those in, I don't know when the last one was. It was prior to me, I, probably prior to the last edition, that we've actually had an increase that, that we sent through truth and taxation. Now, that doesn't negate the effect of property value on folks. So, you know, it does equalize, somebody's, somebody goes up, somebody else goes down in value, but um, we don't collect any, we haven't collected any new revenue. So the, some of the comments that, oh, it's, you know, it's big government, it's big spending. You know, we haven't committed any new tax to any new outside projects since I've been a commissioner. Um, i- it's all based on, you know, existing base. Now, could that base be changed as these values go up? Very likely it could. Um, eh, eh, we've been lucky in that the discussion between sales tax, property tax and tourism tax has kept us in a good place where we haven't had to look for new money. Uh, when, uh, when I started as commissioner, we had to make, we made, had to make quite a few cuts. There was a lot of uh, uh, adjustments in equity for, for wages the, the year prior to me being elected. And I think it brought parity, um, but it did leave us with some pretty big scary numbers. And we had to do some reduction in FTE and, and get to make sure that things were gonna be all right. COVID hit, scared the crap out of us. Might have time, um, we lucked out, uh, we put the brakes on everything, you know, hiring freezes. Uh, thankfully, those revenues are growing like crazy still, so there could theoretically be the opportunity to do some reductions if this thing keeps going.
Thank you. Celeste, same question. Do you want me to rephrase?
Yes, please.
The King County overall tax rate index, eh, eh, tax rate index ranks King County number eight of the twenty-nine counties in Utah and considerably above surrounding counties. Is this necessary? And if not, what measures would you like to see that would lower tax rates?
Okay, yes, thank you. Um, part of the problem is that, that we are general fund poor, and that's in large part due to the fact, I hate to keep beating this drum, but that we can't own or use ninety-four percent of the land other than for tourism and, and few other very limited uses. And so that leaves one industry, which is tourism, and the money that comes from tourism, um, about half of it is sales tax and, and maybe more than half of it, and then half of it is um, TRT tax or transient room tax, tourism tax, bed tax, whatever you wanna call it, for nightly accommodations. And there are super strict rules about how we can spend that money, which means that certain areas like property tax are quite low in our area. Um, but then other taxes, we have to increase them quite a lot just to try to get around the limitations that we have. And I don't see that as an issue that goes away unless we get way better at advocating and pleading our case to the Utah Legislature, and so that they will, um, relieve us of some of those parameters around how we can spend our monies. So there's, if there was just one tax, like a flat tax, let's just live in fantasy land for a second, a flat tax and all the money went into the general fund and it was for us to decide how it was spent, then we will, we'll probably do with quite a low tax amount. But because there's so many strings attached to every single fund, then we've got to get creative and raise taxes in certain areas like sales tax in order to compensate for that.
Okay, Celeste, this, you'll go first on this one. Law enforcement, specifically the efforts and responsibilities of the county sheriff represent probably the largest portion of services provided by the county. Um, how would, how do you feel that, that you would like to work with, or I mean, would work with and support um, law enforcement in the county?
So the sheriff is an uh, independently elected official. And um, they are the guardians of our constitutional rights in um, our county. And so they, they have sovereignty, if you will, and what are you asking me? If I wanna give them sovereignty, because I do. Um, or are you asking me if I would fight to help fund them and advocate with them? Because I do see that we, i- it is beneficial for us to partner with um, our sheriff in advocating for our county and our needs and how um, outside forces make our jobs more difficult, and maybe we can work together to relieve some of that.
I think you did good. That's not a really fair question. It is a fair question, but, but like you said, he's an elected official. The only thing that you have control over him would be his budget. That would be the only thing, I think. Andy, uh, same question.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page on this. Um, we're, we're, oh, camera fell over. We're unbelievably lucky, and I would just start with, with praise on our sheriff. You know, he's been here a long time. The guy's phenomenal. Um, he's done an unbelievably good job of not only covering revenue, but generating revenue and doing just a, just a kick-ass job of protecting our county. I mean, you, uh, you can go anywhere and you can feel safe in this county, and if there's an issue, they'll find it and they'll fix it, you know? Um, uh, if, so, I love working with him, you know, great friend, confidant, you know. Uh, we couldn't agree more, uh, ethically, morally, you know, um, we discuss every you know, decision made in the county, we have that kind of sheriff that they, it can, you get his input. I mean, you'd be stupid to not, you'd make a move without getting the sheriff's opinion. He, he's a wise man for his age. Now that said, there's a federal component that um, we're always fighting for. Um, in that ninety-plus percent of federal land that Celeste alluded to, um, that relationship with BLM law enforcement has been tenuous at times, you know? That's a nice word. It was a crap show at times. And uh, we're super lucky that right now it could be worse, although they refuse to hu- help, you know, fund or, you know, these millions of acres of monument that we have. The sheriff's got sole responsibility. And, but to Celeste's point, he's autonomous. He, you know, we've got called out on gun rights, Second Amendment. I, I don't believe those issues are something that the legislative body of the county should be dealing with. The sheriff controls that. He is constitutionally assigned those responsibilities. People wonder, well, the commission's gotta come out for gun rights and all that. No, no. We have gun rights during the constitution and leave the sheriff alone, let him do his job, you know? And I guarantee you that if the federal overreach lands in our county, our sheriff will be one of the first there to make sure that that power is put in check. He understands that responsibility very well. And uh, it's not my business, other than to support him and help him with his budget. And uh, we love what we've got going, we need to do more of the same. He is the, uh, he is the chief law enforcement officer in our state, you know, so in our county, so.
Okay, um, last question. Over the last decade, Rob Bandeik submitted these ques- some of these questions, and this is one of his pet ones. Over the last decade, King County has made significant, significant efforts regarding criminal justice. That include expansion of the King County Victim Services, establishment of the Children's Justice Center, establishment of the King County Drug Court, and the King County Pre-Trial Services and other probation programs. You support those programs? And how would you plan on continuing supporting them if elected? I think you go first this time, Andy.
Okay, uh, yeah, same, it's kind of the same pitch. Uh, he's an elected official. Rob lives and breathes, you know, his job as the, uh, as the county attorney. Uh, most all of these programs are his, you know, he's either created or expanded, um, and he's done a phenomenal job by doing that without adding any significant burden to his budget. Um, you know, him and Devin have done a phenomenal job of finding state and federal resources for these programs. Uh, some naysayers say, well, it's handouts, you shouldn't be taking handouts and, and blah, blah, blah. But he, Rob does it in such a, an efficient way. The programs are phenomenal. It's just a matter of, is it something that the public can afford to support? And does it put a burden on our locals taxpayers? I don't think you can find fault with any of the programs. Um, you know, we're not. You know, we're not San Francisco, thank goodness. You know, we don't have Soros funded prosecutors, thank goodness. But yet he seems to find a compassionate middle ground where he helps a lot of these folks who are having issues without taking it too far. I support him in what he does. And I work with Rob currently over his office and, uh, he's, he does an unbelievably good job with fiscal restraint.
Thank you. Uh, same question.
Yes, so if you were to just ask me my personal opinion, I'm a little bit more toward individual sovereignty and individual medical sovereignty and, and each person being responsible for their own health, including their mental health and, and their, um, relationship with substances. That's, that's the ideologue speaking there. And then when it comes to pragmatism, the attorney is again, uh, an independently elected official with, um, domain over their office. And so if the public is, and our current attorney runs on that platform and, and those services are extremely important to what he presents and offers to the public. If you vote for me, I will keep doing this. And if so many of our, um, constituents feel that that's a valid platform, that they are voting for continued services in that area, then I'm just gonna respect and honor that.
Thank you. Okay, um, now, we've gone, we've gone almost an hour. Uh, I really appreciate your responses. I think it's gonna be healthy, help, helpful and, and healthy for the, for the voters to be able to, to, to get on and see these. In, in the interest of fairness, Patty and Michael were not able to be on. I'll try and reach out to them and see if I can get them to spend some time with me. Uh, I think it's really healthy when the public gets to know your perspectives and I appreciate your responses. Is there any, can I, can I allow each one of you three minutes just for recap if you wanna, you know, in a non-confrontational way? I don't want you to, to go against your opponent here, because that's not the platform that I would like to run. But would either of you like to take about three minutes, each one of you? And I don't, Celeste, go ahead.
I go first?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, um, sometimes people ask, why do you wanna be a commissioner? You're already on Canab City Council and, and um, we really like having you there. We like having you represent us. Why are you leaving us? Um, a- a- and Canab, where I am, the city councillor, is the county seat. There's about five thousand people in Canab and fewer than that, a few thousand more in the rest of the county. So in, in some ways, as far as number of people I'm representing, it's not a huge leap up to go from city council to county commission. But I feel like I can do an even better job advocating for people as a county commissioner. Um, I'm the chair of the Republican Party and as such, I go to meetings all around the state multiple times a year. Um, work with the legislature, work with other county commissioners, eh, especially our neighboring county commissioners, but all over the state. And I, I would hate to see that wasted. There's things that I can help with as a city council person, but there's even more that I could do as a county commissioner, and that's why I want to run. I want to advocate for us and I, and our rights and also, um, getting some accountability to the, coming from the state and the federal government as far as ways that they are harming us and, uh, getting some justice on that, I guess. And so that's my focus and my goal.
Thank you. Celeste. Andy, do you want to take a couple of minutes and?
Yeah, I, I, um, enjoy what I'm doing. I'm lucky that, you know, I've been through a lot of different uh, lifestyle, you know, employment moments through my thirty years in Canab. I'm lucky enough now to be in a spot where I've got a little bit of free time. And, um, you know, when I first ran, um, we had some real, some, some great people retiring, stepping down, and I thought, oh my gosh, I wanna protect you know, what we've had over the many, many decades in the history of the county and, and the current track trend that we were on was great. I want those values, those morals, those ethics, those, the ability to raise kids. That's why I'm in Canab, was I had a one-year-old and, and we were living in the city at the time and it was like, where are we gonna go, you know, and back home to Southern Utah where my wife grew up was the actual connection got me here. And primarily, I wanted to protect that from some of these trends that are happening. Then I thought it was a big deal. Now it's pretty crazy. You know, but I wanna keep what we have in, in a very simple summarized way. We'll protect what we've always had here and, and, uh, make it a safe, enjoyable place to raise family. Um, but that said, I've made a lot of connections, I think, you know, this, you're sending my, my first term. Um, I've got experience. I really have enjoyed getting out, meeting, you know, like Celeste mentioned, surrounding counties, AOG stuff, other government, you know, individuals, the state legislature, spent a lot of time working, uh, developing good relationships that I think are healthy to get stuff done for our county. Things like the AG's office and, you know, the list you could get into that acronym soup, you know, CDC and, and Chris Stewart's office, my police office, you know, all our different, uh, state legislators, you know, working with, um, you know, Phil Lyman and Darren Owen. So we just met Monday night. We had a great meeting on some, some new stuff that's coming down the pipe on taxes, some TRT. Uh, you know, uh, I was able to call with a little help and Celeste would be awesome at the same thing and get a dinner. You know, I drove to Salt Lake. I met with, with two of our senators, Senator Hekins, Senator Owens, Carl Albrecht, our representative, all sit down at the table. We had a private dinner, said, these are issues that we have in King County. You know, we've got mitigation. We're, we're getting buried with tourism. You guys are telling us how we can spend our tax money when it's, that's stupid. We need flexibility. You know, and blah, blah, blah. And we've got, I've got a commitment out of those, all three of those gentlemen, they were gonna meet with the speaker um, to, today and discuss legislation for this upcoming year. Um, we've got, I've got three bills that I'd like to see run that will give us more control and more help with mitigation with law enforcement, with roads. And, and they've agreed to sponsor those both in the House and Senate. I wanna continue those relationships and with he- help of a couple other wonderful commissioners, we could get some amazing things done. Takes a while to get those started. And I'd like to just continue, uh, some of those same efforts.